Good evening. Welcome to the, what is the date today? The May?
Twenty-third.
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 Welcome to the May twenty-third special city council meeting. We call the meeting to order and would everybody please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should we ask you what your favorite subject is?
That would be journalism. Okay. We are going to start with general orders and I am going to ask Mr. McNichol to guide us through this.
Mayor John McClain will be providing a report that was generated by the Parking Steering Committee and they spent quite a bit of time working on this subject and John will give the presentation.
Yes, and I'll start with, I'll introduce the members of the Parking Steering Committee, all of whom are here tonight. We have, and I'll, you guys can just wave as I call your names out. Mike Buchert, Alan Brunkin, Judy Rhodes, Richard Buchanan, Steve Spradling, Tom Jordan, and Ival Gregory. And this group has been together ever since the parking study was done in 2013 and has reviewed it in great detail, helped create the new fines that we implemented for overtime parking downtown and things like that. Also, we have some staff support here that would include me, but also Paula Dennison, Charlotte Laverne, and Melinda Gray, who have helped also with this. So what the Parking Steering Committee did in order to kind of review downtown parking was take a look at the 2005 Puma Plan, which had some parking recommendations in it and also the parking study that we did in 2013. So we have some kind of general things to talk about. Parking is never free and that's one of the things that's clear in both studies. The land and the pavement requires money from somebody and if the driver doesn't pay, that doesn't mean the cost of it goes away, it just means it's shifted to someone else. Private parking is included in the cost of the goods and services, so you're paying for parking at Walmart, for example, even though you're not putting a dime in the meter. Residential parking, your driveway, the street, is included in the cost of the house. And then, public parking is subsidized by taxpayers. And in taking a look at parking in general, there's a dilemma and this comes straight from the study. You can have parking that is cheap and convenient, but not enough of it. And the closer you get to convenient, the worse that gets. You can have parking that's convenient and there's enough, but it's expensive. And then, you can have cheap and enough, but it's inconvenient, so you might have to walk a long way. And those are the things that the Parking Steering Committee and the plan tries to look at and balance. Taking a look at downtown parking needs specifically, we currently have 2,483 total parking spaces. Of those, 1,415 are public and 170 of those are in public lots. If you look at the pictures here, the blue areas are parking that is underutilized, from zero to forty percent full during the times that the study looked at it. I also went out myself this past week, just out of curiosity, and did some quick counts as I walked. And in the two blocks on either side of Main Street between City Hall and Husband, I counted 102 parking spaces that were empty, all within a block of Main Street. In the public parking lots, on Wednesday morning, there were 82 empty and on Thursday afternoon, there were 72 empty. So kind of just doing a little spot check. The problem is that we have a surplus of parking in downtown, but it's not necessarily where people want to park. So there are pockets, along Main Street especially, where all of the parking is full, even though there are places downtown that you can count empty spaces. It's important to think about, the study, the parking study indicated there was 765 spaces surplus downtown, out of that 1,400. Important to think about this because one of the studies, the Puma Plan, recommended a 350-space parking garage. And given the current cost of parking garages per space, that's around $7 million, so it's a fairly expensive endeavor when we're looking at, under current conditions, we have a surplus of parking downtown. So development would be needed to justify decreasing the amount of parking. If, one of the things that's coming up is the discussion about what to do with Block 34. And it's important to note that if a park is put in Block 34, that would eliminate 62 parking spaces in that parking lot that's there now. One of the other things that we looked at very seriously was parking management system. And the reason that you would want to do this downtown isn't necessarily because we're trying to manage the fact that we have a surplus, but to maybe make better use of all of the parking. So the current system is free to the driver and it's based on timed parking. If we implemented a parking district with paid parking, there'd several components. It would be, and to use a term that Richard Buchanan came up with in our meetings, generalized customization. And that's kind of what OSU does. They have a system, but they have to tweak it here and there to make it work for various situations. So in a parking management system, we'd have concentric and varied timing and payment zones. You would have higher costs in higher demand areas and may, or maybe same cost, but less time available for that amount. It would ensure adequate turnover and availability in the high-use areas. And then, you could have varied timing zones to deal with specific issues, such as residential parking and employee parking. And we could, for example, have paid permit parking in 24-hour zones for residents that wouldn't necessarily be right next to the building where you live, but it would ensure that you have a space to park your car. And then, paid permit parking for employees in some eight-hour zones would be another example of something that could be done. And then, we also talked about the need for some 30-minute loading zones in areas throughout downtown, so that people could just drop you off or trucks could unload things. The thing about a parking management system too, is it's not necessarily implemented to provide funding, it's implemented to manage the system downtown, but it could provide significant funding for downtown improvements. We didn't delve deeply into how much to charge for parking, but if you were to say, take the 350 spaces in the parking, the proposed parking garage, and charge a dollar per space for eight hours a day, it could generate roughly a million dollars a year. So if we were to manage the parking that we have right now, in some way or fashion like that without the parking garage, those funds could be directed towards some of the things that we've talked about wanting to do downtown, such as streetscapes and parks and other improvements to downtown. It could also be used to fund a future parking garage if development indicated the need for one. Then this parking management system, if it works out, could be expanded to other areas. And one of the things that we've talked about a lot in the Steering Committee meetings, especially with Ival Gregory, is the need to move something like this to the Greek neighborhoods and possibly also to Westwood, so that we can better manage very limited parking and very high-demand parking around the campus. So our recommendations are, basically, both plans indicate that development may require additional parking in the future, but no additional parking is needed at present without additional commercial or residential development in the area. A parking management system should be considered to make the best use of what we have. And we would recommend that since the bid and the merchants would be heavily involved in the decision to do this, that we send this concept to the bid board for discussion and determine if they would like to proceed with some sort of a parking management system before we make a final decision. Then the Steering Committee could work out the details of how that might work, based on the parking study. And I have my whole support system here to help answer questions, so I will leave it at that.
I'm just curious, can you just quickly run through the board members, just their jobs or what they do or, like, I know Buchert's OSU, but the other board members, what they're...
Mike Buchert's with OSU. Alan Brunkin is a retired architect. Judy Rhodes is retired schoolteacher, citizen member. Richard Buchanan currently works for OSU Spears School of Business. Steve Spradling is Director of Parking and Transportation for OSU. Tom Jordan's with the Greek Neighborhood Association and Ival Gregory is as well.
Perfect. I was just curious. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, did you have a question?
John, I was just curious, your anecdotal study of empty spaces was last week?
Yes.
Okay. And would that be a comparable study done during schooltime, during OSU term?
Yeah, realizing that school was out, I just thought, okay, I'm just going to go count and see what we've got. But the study indicated comparable issues as far as vacant spaces.
Okay.
The ones on Main Street are full, but you get a block away, if you're willing to walk a block, you can usually find a place to park.
Well, that, you know, the triangle diagram, inexpensive, convenient, and enough, I don't know about enough, you could probably put a number to that, but inexpensive and convenient are rather subjective.
Yes. Yeah, it's a matter of, you know, walking a block isn't that inconvenient to me. To some people, it's either inconvenient or difficult even, if you can't walk that far.
I think the very important point is, no parking is free.
I had written down the same thing.
Yeah.
It's, did you say a dollar a day for parking?
No, it'd be, if we charged a dollar an hour, maybe I said a dollar a day.
I was going to say a dollar a day, I think we could do better than that.
Yeah, well, I was just...
And that, like I said, we haven't settled on any numbers, that would be something that would be worked out as we went forward with something, because that's just a number that, I can kind of give you an idea of what it would do.
When you say downtown, John, do you mean Main Street? One block over, Sixth Street?
Basically, the area from Sixth down to Tenth that's outlined in the pictures that I showed, and then all the way over to Duck and Lowry.
So you were including Block 34, which would take away, you said 62?
There's 62 spaces in that parking lot now.
Will you go over the numbers just one more time?
Sure. Want to put the picture back up? That would be helpful. Okay. There you go. All right.
Now, tell us about that picture, because it's so...
Very small for old eyes.
The picture to the left, where you see my cursor, I don't know if that's your left or not, but, right now, that's all of the parking lots and those are not the on-street spaces. Wherever you see...
Is that Main Street in the middle, going up and down?
Main Street's right in the middle. So this is two blocks either side, and then from Sixth down to Tenth. The blue areas are the ones that are from zero to forty percent utilized. So a lot of these lots, it's important to note, are private parking lots, but they take the pressure off of the public parking lots, so they're still part of the mix. Of the total downtown parking spaces, there's 2,483. 1,415 of those are public, and that includes 170 in city lots, which would be part of what's in this first picture. The other picture shows all of the on-street parking, all the angle parking on all the streets. And you can also see that in that area, there are some blue areas that are zero to forty percent utilized. The, both of the studies indicate roughly a surplus. The study that nails it down is the Carl Walker Study in 2013, that said 765 spaces is roughly our current surplus of parking. Not right on Main Street. That's the main thing.
What does surplus mean?
It means that the parking is underutilized. It's not, it's either empty or not used most of the day.
So it's not a, is it a question of, at peak downtown parking usage, there are still 765 open spaces?
They did their, they did their studies and their counts at peak times and they were here for a week checking when those peak times were to make sure that they'd get them at the right time. I did mine at random, so I can't, I can't claim that's scientific at all, but...
Do we know what percentage businesses offer employee parking or have employee-dedicated lots?
I don't know that. I'm not sure if that's in the...
Zero.
Melinda might know.
Zero, wow, okay.
Helps to have a support system.
Zero employee lots?
That's, I mean, that's, yeah.
Well, what are the private lots then?
The, well, we own private lots.
I would imagine some of them provide...
Well, okay, let's back up. Stillwater Medical Center provides parking in the lot, in the Tubner Garage. And there are a couple of private lots, small private lots, that rental businesses rent spaces in for some of their employees, but we're not, it's not more than five.
So maybe all of, so it'd be better to say, maybe all of the kind of smaller merchants, none of them will offer spots, like Louis' or Brooklyn's, those don't have dedicated spots that we're aware of?
Louis' customers, I mean, Louis' employees are typically in Lot 34. Some of them park, there are a few employees that park at Walgreens for downtown merchants. There's some that park in the lot behind Brooklyn's.
Uh-huh.
But for the most part, they park in front of each other.
Do we, we don't rent those spots to Brooklyn's, correct? As far as on Lot 34, those are just first come, first served?
No, it's first come, first served.
The only spots that are rented are the ones right out here.
Right.
In Tubner's Garage.
Right.
And then, I think Bank First.
And then, considering private lots too, some of them are private in that they're, you can only park there if you're a customer of that business. So you couldn't necessarily say that anyone can just park there and go wherever they want downtown.
Stillwater National Bank provides for its employees as well, right?
Stillwater National has a few spaces in the garage as well.
Tubner Garage?
No. Oh, okay.
A few, not, I used to know the number, but I don't anymore.
As far as any of the downtown apartments, do we know if any of those landlords offered rental spaces for the garage or the lot out here?
Not that I'm aware of.
Street parking?
It's just, park if you can find a spot.
What about the new, I mean, that new apartment building, there's hardly any parking around there. That one at Ninth and Lewis, they don't offer any spots?
Not that I know of.
Knowing the proposed parking management system would solve some of that.
And one of the...
Please provide them an opportunity.
One of the reasons that we kind of focused on the 24-hours is being, we have an ordinance in place right now that you can't park your car in the same spot for more than 24-hours. Well, if we were to take, identify those areas, we would sign everything downtown. Every parking spot would have a sign, even if it said 24-hour parking. If you have a permit to be there, you can be there for as long as you want, as long as you have the permit, otherwise, you've got to move your car every 24-hours. That would be one way that we talked about for dealing with residential parking.
When you talk to the bid district, will you talk to residents who live down there as well, or will their, the owners of the buildings be included in that?
I think we would probably discuss that with the bid board and work out how we would do that going forward. I think all of us on the committee felt like it needed to not just involve the bid board, but a lot of the people downtown as well.
Agreed.
Were there any bid members on the committee?
No. Angela McLaughlin was there, staff support as well.
Okay. Do we know how many, and this may be a Paula question, but how many apartments or beds there are downtown?
I think that's a Paula question, if she knows. Okay. Don't know.
I would...
May I address the account?
Come on up, if you want.
Where you're headed is a concern for me, okay? Because of the situation that we're in the Greek neighborhood and how parking is required. Parking is required for every inch of the city except the downtown area, okay? Housing is encouraged, but there's no provision for parking in the downtown area. Through the codes, I got the codes from Paula, there's no parking required for any residents in the downtown area, where there is everywhere else in the city. So those folks are not, the landlords are not required to provide parking like anyone else who has a rental property is. So I hope that speaks to the issue.
Yeah, no, absolutely. That's kind of, that's just kind of, just part of my discussion. I guess, I guess I kind of figured some of them would rent.
Well, maybe that's something we need to, yes. I think that that's something we need to consider.
Yeah, that's true.
Is someone who's building downtown needs to be able to maybe provide.
We have, we've talked about that. Ival's pretty passionate about that issue in some of the Steering Committee meetings and it's understandable, he's dealing with it on a regular basis. I've got to figure out a way to provide parking, but downtown doesn't currently for residents. One of the things that we've talked about is that these employee parking permits could be made available, or, I'm sorry, not employee, resident parking permits could be made available to the landlords or the tenants. So it could even be a marketing thing, that I provide free parking with my apartment.
Right. Well, it seems like it's definitely a landlord thing, not a city thing, that we should be controlling, where people issuing passes to park, that's a landlord thing, in my opinion.
I was reading some material today about parking and situations in general and parking in other cities and one of the, one of the suggestions was, no building should have required parking.
I've seen things like that too, that the code just doesn't even, I mean, parking is a marketing decision. If you can't park there, maybe you shop there and maybe you don't. So it's definitely out there.
Was there any discussion of the why people say there's no parking downtown if there's 700 spots available? I mean, is there a plan or an idea of better labeling or better signage, so people know where they can park, that sort of thing?
I think it's, and we've talked about this a lot, it's, and Steve Spradling has a saying that I will borrow, that we don't have a parking problem, we have a walking problem. He has the same thing at OSU. And the perception is driven by, the way downtown is laid out, you can't necessarily see where you're wanting to go unless you're parked pretty close to it, even if the space isn't that far away. It seems further than it would maybe if you were parking at Walmart or something like that. So it's, it's a perception driven by how downtown is laid out, more than anything.
Do we think, I mean, would signage directing people towards available parking or showing people where the parking?
Would be kind of part of the whole parking management system and that's one of the, one of the things about a parking management system is you use the laws of supply and demand and cost to drive where people park. So we take, we make those prime parking spaces on Main Street more expensive, so that they have greater turnover, so that you can find one, and people can make a decision to park further out if they want to park for free or for less money.
I think that kind of goes back to, I don't know if we want to discuss this now, but kind of our discussion last week, or was it two weeks ago, about the having people pay to park to go into a store and I think there's both sides of if we feel like that would hurt their business, you know? And I, in my opinion, I'm thinking of Tulsa, so when you go downtown Tulsa, and I could be wrong if someone's in the crowd knows better, but I don't think there's a free spot anywhere down there. I think you have to pay everywhere you go. And they're always busy.
Yeah, Oklahoma City is the same way.
Oklahoma City's the same way and so, you know, I definitely think, if anything, the people that are actually going to shop in your store will likely pay to be there because they want to go right into that store. And it's, I think that drives the convenience, but, you know, I mean, I...
There's an article that a lot of us have read called "The High Cost of Free," I think it's called "The High Cost of Free Parking," is that? It basically compares two, two commercial areas and one decided to go with free parking, the other one decided to charge for it. The one that went with the free parking basically failed and went bankrupt. There's a couple of things that they seem to think were in play there and one is that people deemed that that place had more value because, you know, it cost me to park there, it must be worth something. And then, the other thing was they could always find a parking space, because the parking management system ensured that those parking spaces turned over on a regular basis, they didn't have to search for one. And with the surplus we have downtown, you're going to be able to find a parking space and you're going to be able to find one for free, you just might not be able to park right on Main Street for free.
If I could provide some anecdotal information, the last time that we checked, and perhaps Ms. Gray remembers this, for recent numbers, but I think a couple of years ago, we actually had two business owners who insisted on parking in front of their business downtown, when there was free parking a block away. And they paid $2,200 in one case and $2,500 in another case, I think, in fines, for the privilege of being able to do that. So people are, in essence, paying now for the convenience of parking right in front of the building.
And those same people are continuing to park in front of their business, the fines have gone up to $10, it doubled from 20 and 40 ago. In most cases, they're paying $20 per ticket. So a parking management system for them would actually be a little cheaper.
So they'll be in favor of it.
But it'll also be a little more uniform.
They'll not be in favor.
Oh, okay.
And that is, that is one of the things that we've talked about, is it's going to be, it's going to potentially be difficult to get your head around the idea that this parking shouldn't be free.
Well, and I think, Pat, I mean, it's not free. I think if we get the idea out of everyone's mind that right now it's free parking, it's not free. I mean, the city is paying for that.
Somebody's paying for it.
We're paying.
It's free to the person parking.
Yeah, so it's not, I think, I'm so glad you said that, it's not, I mean, in theory, yes, it's free, but nothing is ever free.
No. Someone's definitely paying for it, in one way or another.
Well, if you've read that Startup City book that the BPEC Committee passed around, their contention is that any piece of public property, street, parking, sidewalk, is at a cost. So it's kind of interesting.
You're not proposing that we do parking management for all of downtown, all of the spaces, or are you?
Yes, all of them.
Okay.
And the system would be, like I said, generalized customization. They wouldn't all be treated the same, they'd be treated in the way that's appropriate for where they are and what they are.
I like the description of the concentric circles type of approach and I think, I know that tonight we're assigned downtown parking needs, but I hope that, has the committee looked at other parts of the city, form-based code, corridor redevelopment area around campus?
We've talked about those in, with this discussion and those are some areas that we'd actually like to start tackling next.
This might be naive, but I think that if we don't just target downtown, but be thinking about all of our areas that have heavy concentration of need for parking at the same time.
I know the Greek community, for sure.
I think the, generally, the, probably the entire committee would be in favor of doing that. The same systems apply and we have talked about it. I don't know, is anybody against that idea?
I would say we want to implement it downtown, make sure we've got it working, tweaking while it's close to us, and then start spreading it.
My only, maybe just a point of discussion, and this is just a thought, but my only concern, and I think that's kind of what you're hitting, maybe it looks like we're not singling out downtown. Because it's, I think it's obviously a problem around the university and it's a problem downtown. And so, and I'm hesitant to even do anything without... And, and so, and I'm hesitant to even do anything without getting some input from the bid, because, you know, I'd hate to implement a downtown parking program, and every single one of them's against it.
Definitely.
But I, you know, I think if we can communicate with them and get their ideas, maybe we can get a, a great plan altogether. But I think something needs to be done. I just, I don't want to be seen as singling out a specific area.
That's why I would like to see a study or a, a plan or recommendation that we do everything at the same time.
I think we could definitely take a look at that.
I think the hardware cost, you know, all the, I don't know what kind of smart meters we would use, or, I mean, I'm sure there are different, hundreds of different kinds of things, without that type of information too. It's difficult to make really good decisions, but.
Well, and that's, you know, the main thing we wanted to do tonight was just to bring the concept, would you like to see us pursue this idea? And then we can gather up that kind of stuff before we make a final decision on what to do.
So I, I may miss this in earlier meetings, but what exactly is the problem we're trying to solve? What, I mean, is it just the fact that people don't like the fact that Main Street's crowded, and they can't find a spot on Main Street? Or what is, what's the problem here or the Greek house, Greek houses?
The Greek houses, it's hard to navigate your way through a street. Some of the streets, I, I won't be able to name the street that's next to the park. That street I know, I can hardly get through.
Well, the, I think for, for downtown, it's, it sort of evolved from the Block 34 discussion and whether or not we need a parking garage downtown. And that was kind of the, the question that we were trying to answer, do we need it? How much is it gonna cost, et cetera? And a lot of this goes into that.
I think also, Counselor, it's, parking isn't free. And we've been, I know we've looked at this Puma Plan, right? We looked at it, and we've talked about it for years, but we haven't done anything about it, so.
Well, I think one of our concerns also was that it's, it's hurting some businesses. Because, I mean, if you drive in front of Summit or Aspen downtown or Louis during lunch and you can't find a spot, you might leave. And those people might just be sitting down there because they have two hours before they have to move, or they can, I mean, and so I think part of our concern initially was that we, we also want to make sure our businesses aren't being hurt by the fact that there's no parking, when maybe some of those people are employees. That's why my, one of my questions was, you know, is there employee parking? Some of those people may just be employees that are parking right there when they could park two blocks away for free and drive their business. And so, but again, that, I think that's gonna go back to the discussion of, you know, how the bid feels. Maybe they don't feel that way. Maybe they feel like parking is absolutely fine, but I don't see that coming out, but...
I, I don't think that we, I think it would be really naive to say that part of the issue isn't revenue. When John said, you know, how many parking spaces at a dollar a day would be a trillion dollars?
Yeah.
And we keep asking the city to do more, you know, do wayfinding signs, do different light poles, do different this, you know, fix the sidewalks, fix the curbs. And there's, you know, there's just a, a finite amount of money. And when we have a, when we have a product of the city that does actually cost us, and then could pay itself back in order to do some of these things, I think, I don't, I think we have to look at the, the figures. I have no idea if it would actually work out to be significant enough to, to, to follow through. But with good figures, I think it would help us make a better decision. You know, if the money goes into the, that area?
Yeah. I mean, I would be very interested to see the parameters around what we're spending that money on, right? Because it's money that we haven't collected to this point in the history of, since I've lived here, you know, downtown parking has been free. And so it, it's difficult, you know, I would think, for people to say, well, now you're gonna start charging for parking, you provided it for free. If we're providing additional services or building new things with that money, that's great, but let's make sure that we're being clear about what we're doing with it. We're not just saying, oh, here's an opportunity for the city to make some more money, and we're gonna grab it. I don't, I don't love that as a, as a justification for doing it. But if there are, yeah, absolutely, the idea of streetscape beautification and putting more, you know, more signs up to help people find places and all that kind of stuff, if that's what we're talking about funding with it, then I would like to see that defined as part of the, the plan.
In the, in the little bit of reading that I did today, the most successful programs seem to be ones that have it very specifically earmarked. You know, the money from the parking in, in, on these three streets goes to these three streets.
Yeah.
It won't be to hire someone to go give tickets, or...
Well, you're gonna have to do that too.
There will be, there will be some manner.
But not solely, and it wouldn't just go into the general fund to be spent. I, I agree. Has to be for the good of...
And that was, that was the, one of the main tenets of all of our discussions, is any money that was generated by this should go back into the area where it was generated for streetscapes and things like that.
And that's a, we've been speaking about streetscapes for a long time, and that's a real need. So I, I think there's a justification for it, for sure.
It's a potential funding source for the form-based codes implementation as well.
A lot of things.
Mm-hmm. So...
Well, in previous discussions, I just, because I know the bid board chair is here in the room, previous discussions, I know we talked about the validation system downtown, and that's still possible with a parking management system, correct?
Yes.
Good point, very good point. Anything else, Counselors, questions, concerns?
What, what specific information do we need to provide?
We're not voting on this tonight, we're just giving you direction, is that?
To, we would like to go ahead and start discussions with the bid board, and we could also start looking at the other areas.
Looking at the other areas in the city, but...
Yeah, I think-
Parking issues.
For me, I would like to see the downtown, and then also the form-based code area. I think that's our, you know, our major, one of our, in my opinion, that's almost a bigger problem than downtown, for driving on the streets. And, you know, I think, I know Mr. Spradling's in the room, so he can probably answer this, but I don't think they have any free spaces at OSU. And so if you can drive a block off and get a free spot, you're probably gonna do it. So in my mind, I think that's an area we can target. And I don't know, am I, am I lying? You're kind of hidden.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. We charge for all of ours. Lots of, lots of university cities have a rough zone around the campus, if not a full campus-wide parking permanent system. West Virginia University and Morgantown, you have to have permanent park on any city street, any city street. Whether if you're a resident or not, you park on the street, you gotta have a permanent.
I'd love to see that, maybe some comparisons from other university cities then, if we could get that.
We've actually started looking at, at several, for a different issue, the, the parking on the grass issue, but we can look at them for those reasons too.
That'd be great, just to kind of...
Also, the cost of the management system, what it would cost us to implement, and how, how long it would take us to make that back.
Yeah, we would need to have, here's what we can expect to make, here's what we think you should charge, here's what it's gonna cost us to put it in place, so we would need to come up with all of that.
And where the money goes.
And where the money goes.
And how much it would cost, or you, should we have a recommendation on how much a ticket would cost, or is that just already part of city code?
It's already part of city code, but we could certainly look at changing it.
How much is an OSU ticket when you park somewhere you're not supposed to?
Wrong zones, $20. No, no permanent, $35. Overtime ticket is the same as a city ticket.
Okay.
Reserve spaces will vary from there, and then we escalate after, so we can decide if we should.
Anything else?
I think, I think that could at least just be a discussion of if they think that fees need to be reassessed. I mean, that may just be something we do alone. Maybe we say no parking, but look at fees.
Have we included everything we want? Anybody want anything else for them to come back? It's quite a heap, I know.
I think I, I think I got it all.
Yeah. All right. Thank you to the committee and how hard you've worked, and for how many years you've worked. And we appreciate your expertise, and couldn't do this without you. And I hope-
I'm sorry. I was just gonna ask, could we ask the committee if there's anything they'd like to input or think we're missing? Is that...
I was getting ready to do that.
We think alike.
Is, is there anything else that you would like us to consider? I could tell you were on the edge of your seat, Mike.
I just want to thank the staff, they're really, supportive, really do a lot of research for us, and come back with several different information. I know a lot of us have different backgrounds, so we ask a lot of different questions, and they try to interpret what our questions really mean, and come back with, with great numbers for us. So I want to thank the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We too appreciate the staff. I know this is a lot of work, but this is really good information, and working together with citizen committees is so important, because we get our best information that way.
This has been a really good group to work with, and it does, it does definitely provide a bit of a microcosm to what we expect to see, because all of these issues come up during the discussions. Eventually, you'll hear about the parking on the grass discussion, and that, that definitely-
I would like to hear that discussion.
Showed both sides of the issue.
Very much. Anything else? Okay, that moves us to item B. Mr. McNichol.
Which is also...
I knew he wasn't leaving.
Mr. McLennan's report.
You had asked if we could take a look at what that parking lot on Washington Street might generate if we were to charge for parking there, so...
And that was eight spots?
Yes. So just to, just to, again, use the, if, for every dollar an hour that we were to charge for those parking spaces, for eight, from eight to five, would generate $23,000 a year, assuming they were full eight hours a day. If we were to go something along the lines of what OSU does and rent spaces for a period of a year, we could at least charge what they do, which runs anywhere from $350 to $400 a space. So that would be $2,800 a year, or $3,200 a year. More than likely, if a business goes in there, it's gonna generate a lot more sales tax than any of those three options, I would imagine. You could take that dollar an hour and ramp it up accordingly, and that would give you $23,000 more each time.
And you're telling us this because this is city property, that we're trying to decide what we need to do.
And we started the appraisal process-
Good.
Last week.
Okay, so will we hear more once the appraisal comes back? I think that would be important.
We can give you an update.
Okay.
What did we estimate the property be again?
The assessed, the assessed values with the improvements was $211,000. That probably isn't what the appraisal's gonna say, but I don't know, they can go either way.
And according to Patty, it's four weeks before...
Yeah, he said it would be about four months.
Okay.
And you said $23,000, which is obviously a high estimate. That'd be a rental every day.
Yeah, if, if all eight spots were full all day, for a dollar an hour, $23,000 a year.
And, and if we rented the spaces for $300 to $400?
That, that would be $3,200 a year.
$3,200 a year?
Eight, eight spaces, that's $400. Only be $3,200 a year.
Okay.
So it'd be less.
It's good math. So it would be less.
Yes, it would be less.
Just to make sure I'm getting that correct.
So I think we can scratch that one.
Yeah.
Right? I don't think that's worth it.
I think we should sell it.
Depends on the appraisal.
If we want to wait for the appraisal, but I, I think we should sell it. I mean, we're, if we're gonna make bare minimum, say even $180,000, and then plus our sales tax, I mean, it's gonna take-
It would take a long time.
-years to get our rental costs back.
But we have to wait four or five weeks anyway, and we can certainly vote on the day it comes back if we're in session.
Well, we're, we're gonna auction that, that spot off.
Yes.
Right? And then the council will decide after the auction bids come in, what we're gonna do.
Whether or not you want to sell.
So we've...
If anyone wants to buy a parking lot, they can know how much it'll rent for now.
Or put a really tall, sm- narrow building there, right? Any questions, comments, anything other? Thank you. That was quick. That, wasn't that just last week that we discussed this? Thank you.
Couldn't have done it without them.
All right, well, thank you for both issues. If nothing else, then that moves us to a request for executive session, Mr. Dorman.
Request for executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307b2 to discuss labor negotiations with International Association of Firefighters Local 2095.
Okay, do we have a motion to move into executive session?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move to executive session? Please vote. And with the vote of four to zero, then we are now in executive session.